No, I don't. Thank you very much.
The name plaque for our invite.
Oh.
Just pull one over.
Do we have an extra one up here? Do you have an extra one?
Not at all.
Oh, we should get somebody to run one up and we'll have to fold it over and take it out for today.
Get somebody to type it out on paper and fold it over. I don't think they have the same set of... They wouldn't work here anyway. We're gonna get one made up quickly.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, please turn off your cell phones or use the etiquette feature. Today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube as part of a six-month pilot project. In accordance... This meeting is in accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act as amended. It's... The meeting is now called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaws, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new lots. The hearing... The procedure that we follow is I will vet the agenda to determine which applicant... Applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require a more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all the non-contested applications have been cleared. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to meet with the interested parties outside the hearing room in an effort to resolve concerns or issues. If no person is present in interest, the applicant will proceed with their presentation if we require them to. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. When you're making your submissions, you're allowed a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When you're addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium at the front here. Hand in your decision request card to the committee staff seated on my right. Then go to the podium, clearly state your name and your address. If you have a written submission you read from, please hand it to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer when you're done. The applicant or agent will have five minutes. The individuals in support will then be allowed to express their views. If there are several speakers in opposition, then we ask that you select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We do not want to hear the same points over again. We may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submission. When all speakers are finished, the applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken by the committee in to make a decision. This will mark the end of all discussion. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with our decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt with by a new tribunal called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or TLAB. For more information about TLAB, please visit the TLAB website or the Committee of Adjustments website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of our decision and to be informed of appeal proceedings, you must fill out the decision request card. Please include your email address, as the TLAB will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. Please make sure you hand in your completed form to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer or staff before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. Do we have a motion to confirm the last meeting minutes? Do we have a second here?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, fine. All in favor, minutes are confirmed. Any declarations of interest on the morning list?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any files to close, Madam Deputy Secretary?
Mr. Chair, there are no files to close today.
All right, thank you.
Unless there's someone in the room who wishes to withdraw their application.
Is there anyone who wishes to withdraw their application at this time? Okay, I will now vet the morning list. Number one, 19 Western Battery Road. The applicant here? Yes, any opposition? All right, we will proceed. Number two, 324 Richmond Street West, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Okay, number three, 161 Hampton Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition?
No.
No. Number four, 133 Summer Hill Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna hold that one down. You might go outside and see if you can at least have some discussions, maybe you can narrow the issues. Number five, 455 O'Connor Drive, applicant. Yes, any opposition? No. Number six, 17 Lakeview Avenue, any opposition? Okay. Number seven, 122 Glenwood Crescent, any opposition? Thank you. Number eight, 73 Hillcrest Drive, applicant, any opposition? Number nine, 11A Grandview Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Number 10, 236 First Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Oh, thank you. Yes, opposition?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna hold that one. You might go outside and see if you can resolve your issues. Number 11, 250 Shooter Street. Yes, any opposition? Yes, okay, we're gonna hold that one too. You might go outside and see if you can resolve any issues. Number 12, 30 Elmer Avenue. Any... Just a minute. Are you both applicants? Pardon? Okay, opposition? Are you opposed? Oh, you got the wrong file? Okay. So there's no opposition on 30 Elmer Avenue? All right, thank you. 1312 Ozark Crescent, applicant. Oh, okay, any opposition? Okay. Number 14, 1637 Gerard Street East, applicant, any opposition? Oh, okay. We will start with number one. 19 Western Battery Road. Better give me about 10 minutes to read the purpose of this one. "The purpose of this application is to alter the redevelopment plans for a new 28-story residential building containing 481 dwelling units approved under site-specific bylaws 566-2000, 684-2003, and 1079-2010 by permitting a day nursery, reducing the minimum required resident parking spaces, increasing the maximum permitted building by three stories, and podium height decreasing the minimum required indoor and outdoor residential amenity space, and by increasing the maximum permitted modifications to the development standards..." Pardon me. "...permitted..." "...and podium, decreasing the minimum required indoor and outdoor residential amenity space, and by increasing the maximum permitted width of the mechanical penthouse." And there's been a previous Committee of Adjustment decision dealing with the mechanical penthouse vehicle parking spaces and bicycle parking spaces. And on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning, and a letter from Counselor Layton requesting approval. Yes, sir, perhaps you could tell us what this is all about. First, your name.
Sure thing. Hi there, I'm Mitch Gascoigne. I'm the Vice President of Development with Centre Court, and I'm representing the applicant at Liberty Residences, Inc. The site is at the northwest corner of Strawn and East Liberty. And these variances all originated from a meeting that we had with Counselor Layton back in the fall, where he approached us and asked if we would be interested in adding a daycare facility to the space. We thought that... We were already fully down the line in our design with the building, but we also thought that was a good use to add to the community. And Counselor Layton is here, and I'll let him talk specifically about the benefit that the daycare would add. So as I said, we started working with the counselor and city staff in planning, city legal, and childcare services. And we're able to work towards a set of variances that would allow us to build the daycare for the community. The variances submitted are those... Are the ones that are required to allow the daycare to be included. And just to summarize what you have in front of you, you have a list of variances that we've requested for the daycare. You have a PPR in support of those variances. You have some technical reports that just justify the need to make the changes to the building. You have a letter from Counselor Layton, and then you have a planning report from city staff fully in support of the application.
Okay, is it necessary to increase the height by three stories in order to get a daycare center?
Yeah, so the increase in height is what allows us to make the daycare an economically-neutral change to the development.
Could I clarify? The reduction in parking isn't related to the daycare. That's the result of your sales. You're offering parking at $50,000 a parking space, and you haven't had that... Not surprisingly, you haven't had that large take-up.
Yeah, so we... The building's actually fully sold out, and it was sold back in the fall. And we offered the parking at $50,000, which is at below-market rate for parking in the area. We weren't able to sell all the parking that was allocated to the space. Sorry, to the...
Point 3.3, correct?
Pardon me?
That was at point 3.3, the ratio.
That was at point 5.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So one of the variances that we've requested is to reduce the parking. And again, the point 3.3 ratio is in accordance with developments in the area, and we have in planning's report, they have... They've supported our application for a requested parking.
By the way, that's not... That's not the result of providing the daycare. That is separate.
No, I would say...
There is additional density and so forth, too.
So there's like a... There's a basket of things that allow us to provide the daycare. The daycare, we had to convert some space in our podium that was formerly, you know, back-of-house bike parking. We had to reallocate some of that bike parking down into the lower levels, which meant that we needed to take up former parking spaces. So the reduction in parking requirement, the increase in height are the things that are allowing us to, like I said, just come out economically-neutral on the whole addition of daycare to the building.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, I just wanted to ask, have you seen the comments from city planning dated March 23rd, 2018?
I have, yeah. The report and support, yes.
And are you okay with those conditions?
I am, yeah. So we've been working with planning and city legal on those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is Counselor Layton here? I don't know how much we need about the advantages of having daycare there, but we'll...
I'll try to keep it very brief. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This is only my fourth opportunity to come and speak to the Committee of Adjustment. In the last seven years, I've instead relied on the sage wisdom of this committee and worked as hard as we can to uphold the decisions of the committee as those decisions get appealed. I think just first to go over, I think that if you... When we look at what's being proposed here, I think that we see, in my opinion at least, having an understanding of what's going on in the adjacent properties, that the variances are minor in nature, given the size of the current development. They are in keeping with the official plan and the zoning bylaw and the surrounding neighborhood context. This is a tall building neighborhood, and the buildings around generally step down towards the townhomes further to the west and to the north. In November, I was approached by the applicant to discuss some minor variances that they were seeking on the site through their... Through their site plan process. And they... There is one... One of the pieces of Liberty Village that has... We haven't been able to build up is the community services, parks, recreational services, and in this case, childcare. Childcare is a difficult land use to put into a development because of the requirement for adjacent outdoor space. This is probably the only site, remaining site in Liberty Village, that we would be able to accommodate this, because the site is directly adjacent, the... A park to the north, a linear park that runs along the rail corridor. And that's why in that first meeting, I requested that Centre Court would evaluate whether or not a childcare was feasible in the building. To be honest, I didn't think they'd come back with a positive answer. I've asked other developers similar things, and they kind of shy away and say, "No, I think we'll stick to the plan. We don't want to start redrawing our building at this stage." They were quite far along in the process. To my surprise, they... We agreed to come back together a week later, and they brought in a very rough plan of childcare on the second floor with access from the main floor directly adjacent the outdoor space. This... Our children's services department was at that meeting and said that it would meet... They think they could get it to be a licensed childcare. And in fact, they embraced the idea of us investing in childcare and community services in the neighborhood. And we're willing to put some money into the project. Then Centre Court said, "Well, if we're going to take such a significant change and go through this process and add some risk and some additional cost, we think some additional height would be required." And for that, as you read in the staff report, they're willing to hand the childcare over to the city at no cost. And this will be a fully outfitted childcare for 50 children in a neighborhood that I think at one point, we didn't expect children would stay in the neighborhood after they were born. But we know from experience that there's lineups for every childcare spot that we get in Liberty Village.
Who's gonna run... Is the city gonna run the childcare?
So the city won't be running the childcare facility. What we'll do is we will... We will put an RFP out to hire a not-for-profit. So it'll be a not-for-profit childcare provider in the space, but the city will own the space permanently. Which I think what is so exciting about this project, we often, through our Section 42 and Section 37, get a predetermined amount of time in a space. This will be the city's to operate as a childcare in perpetuity. So I thank you very much for entertaining the variances. Again, I think when you look at the surrounding context, directly to the east, we have a building 40-plus stories. Directly to the south, we have buildings of similar heights to the 28 to 30. There... The zoning bylaw, the official plan are reflective of that, and with three stories and a minor adjustment in the parking, I think the variances are minor in nature. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, unless anyone else has questions, I'd like to move approval of the application, subject to the planning condition that was referenced earlier. I clearly think that this meets the four tests and is definitely appropriate development. I applaud the applicant for his initiative in picking up the counselor's challenge to provide daycare. It's a welcome addition to the city.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, have your approval. Thank you. Number two, 324 Richmond Street West. "The purpose of this application is to alter the redevelopment plan approved under site-specific bylaw 1041-214 for a 25-story mixed-use building by adding two additional stories and decreasing the number of resident parking spaces." Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Heritage, and a report from community planning. Your name, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of committee. My name is Andrew Franchek. I'm the planner for Green Park. I just have a handout to give you if I might approach.
Yes.
You would have seen these... Probably have any color. It's a little easier to see. As I get to that point in my presentation, just to give you a little bit of context about the... First of all, the development, and then the proposal. So there was a site-specific bylaw that was approved in 2014 for the development of a 25-story building, residential building with grade-related retail uses. The building's on the north side of Richmond Street, just south of Queen Street, and east of Peter Street. The building's currently in the site plan approval stage, and it's actually under construction. So the underground parking garage has been constructed up to about grade, and that was for the full amount of the required parking, 122 parking spaces. The developer, Green Park, has only sold 73 parking spaces. So similar to the previous presentation, there simply wasn't the uptake in the parking. And so part of this application is to reallocate some of the parking that was initially required to the commercial parking component, so adding seven commercial parking spaces to the already-existing 18 to grow that component, but also to allow for net reduction in the amount of parking in total by 23. And you might ask, well, what's gonna happen to the rest of that space? And in looking at the building plans, there was an opportunity to take amenity space, bike lockers, and a few other things, and put them in the basement level with a dedicated elevator for those uses, and to reallocate some space on the second floor that previously had those uses for better uses, i.e. residential. And that's why the GFA variance is there as well. And of course, there's also requests for two additional stories. With the reduction in parking, there's still a surplus of 19 spaces, even with the 23 reduction, based on the uptake of what was sold. And so the additional two stories and the resulting 34 additional units will actually allow for that spare capacity to be utilized in a more efficient way. So that's part of it. The context here, very much an apartment neighborhood, is developed into a very intense part of the city. The building, as approved, is actually one of the lowest in the vicinity. What we're trying to show here, because it's a little bit difficult to understand when you look at the materials that we've filed, the two floors are actually typical floors that are showing green, that would be inserted into the central portion of the tower and would essentially raise the building in its current form, 25 to 27 stories. So in the context of what's around it, we have the top of the building... So in the context of what's around it, we have the top of the building directly adjacent to the west, or you said, I should say, at 39 stories, and right across the street on the south side, the top local building at 36 stories. Much higher scale than this building. And in terms of the shadows, I did review the staff report. There are no policies specifically controlling shadows on the north side of Queen Street. And I had been involved with the original application back in 2011 when it was proposed, up until it was approved by council in 2014. There was a concern by staff about shadowing after 1:00. When we went back and looked at the shadows, what wouldn't be clear in what we filed to you, because we didn't frankly prepare those shadow images until now, what you have before you in the package that I handed up is actually very interesting because the September shadows, September 21st and March 21st are the two periods that are the most important for the city to control shadows. And we heard from city staff that the 1:00 and after shadows are what really count here. The building actually, as approved, only ever shadowed in the middle of Queen Street on September 21st. So there was actually room to add the two floors without them causing any additional shadow at 1:18. So the net effect is nothing in addition to the shadows. In March, however, there is this 18-minute difference. So whereas the shadows would previously come off the north sidewalk at 1:18, now they come up at 1:36. So there is a slight difference in shadowing in March, but in my opinion, it's this committee's job to look at, is it minor? Does the benefit of the variances outweigh that small additional impact? It still will maintain a very significant portion of no shadow at all in the afternoon period for most of the year, basically from this time onward until the end of September. So I would suggest that's minor. We actually have two pieces of correspondence from Heritage confirming no issues. So very happy to see that because Queen Street is a Heritage District. So just to summarize, and I'll let you then ask me any questions that you might have. In terms of the four tests, it's my opinion it meets it. It will provide for additional housing, more efficiently utilize the existing parking that has been built into this proposal. It does also respond to the 2017 growth plan, which was not in place when the 2014 site-specific approval was granted. So things have changed on the density front. The province does want more intensification, and there's frankly a housing need. There's such a demand. And it will not create any adverse shadow impacts. I'll leave it to you to ask me any questions you have, please.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Sir, when you mentioned the shadow impact, which seems a big focus of Planning's issue, from your diagrams, there, your shadow study, the shadow is actually, the increase in shadows still within the traveled portion of the road. It's not, it does not extend past onto the sidewalk or the buildings on the other side of the street. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. The intent was to keep shadowing off the north side of the sidewalk. So it's actually not hitting the sidewalk, it's just below it. So that's the sidewalk there. The shadowing only touches the curb essentially.
Yes, okay, thank you. And obviously, you've seen the report from City Planning. I was just going to ask, should the committee see merit in this application? They're recommending two conditions. Would you have objection to those conditions?
No objection. Those 23 bicycle parking spaces have been allocated into the basement level and have that dedicated elevator, and the payment would be agreed to as well.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if you could clarify, in the material that's been circulated relative to requested variance number three, the reference is to a minimum of 162 residential parking spaces, but all of your submissions refer to 122.
Yes, I admit that was, at first glance, appeared to be an error, but it wasn't because the calculation in the variance was actually done on the basis of the additional units being added. So when you add those additional 34 units to the total and redo the calculation as per the site-specific bylaw, it ups the requirement up to the 166 as opposed to the 122, which was what was required for the original building, the 25-story building with only the 310 units.
Is that the reason that Planning in their report has said that if the variance is related to two-story additions were approved, the variance related to the decrease in vehicular parking would increase to 60 parking spaces?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was a misunderstanding because we did file a parking study-
Yes.
-that showed that there wasn't simply the demand. And in fact, even with the reduction that we're seeking, there was still an oversupply. And that's part of the reason why Green Park went back and looked at the plans, was hoping for another two stories and the 34 units to basically take up that spare parking capacity.
To clarify, the request before us today is for 92 residential parking spaces, 25 visitor parking spaces, and two shared parking spaces.
That's correct.
Those numbers are correct.
Those numbers are correct.
Thank you.
So we were just handed this report this morning, and I hadn't had a chance to read it, but I see that they talk about the removal of the required vehicle parking spaces from this development site places additional strain on the capacity of the local area's non-vehicle transportation capacity and infrastructure. What in God's name does that-
I think what it means is that, I think what it means, and we've seen this in the news and we've heard Planning talk about it, and it's true. The sidewalks are busy, the subway is busy, the whole city is just busy. But whether that's, you know, through people driving or walking or taking transit, either way, it's going to be busy. So, you know, this, the parking reduction, in my mind, actually reduces the amount of cars that would be coming to the site generally. People will find another way to get around, biking. There's bike lanes on Richmond Street and walking and transit. That's a big part of the lifestyle.
Are they saying that by removing the parking spaces, you're going to increase the pedestrians on the sidewalk?
I suppose those people wouldn't be in as many cars, so they'd be getting around other ways, if I could interpret that report.
Wow, wow. Okay. Any further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I've looked at this. I've certainly listened very carefully to what the applicant's had to say. I've read the materials and been to the site. In my view, after seeing the presentation presented by the applicant specifically with respect to the shadow study, which seems to be a big concern from City Planning, and justifiably so, I think the impact of shadowing from the additional, two additional stories is, in my view, minor and in keeping with the official plan and the zoning bylaw. There's, he certainly submitted a report from Coal Engineering that indicates that the reduction in parking is justified. The vehicle traffic generation associated with the two additional stories is not even significant from a transportation point of view. So I'm going to move approval of the subject application, subject to conditions number one and two on the planning report of March 23rd, which are requiring the provision of bicycle parking spaces and the submission of monies towards transportation projects in the corridor. And I'm going to move approval of the subject application, subject to that condition.
Do we have a second, thank you? No. Yeah, I second the motion. All in favor? Opposed? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number three, 161 Hampton Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a rear detached shed. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, staff reports from Planning, right-of-way management, and forestry. Support, we have a form letter in support signed by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 17 adjacent, nearby owners, and correspondence and concern from 18 Garnet Avenue. Your name, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of committee. My name is TJ Sekura. I am a registered professional planner and principal of Design Plan Services, here on behalf of the owners of the subject property, who are also here in attendance, should there be any questions for them.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. It appears to me that requested variance number one and variance number seven are in conflict with one another. I need you to clarify, are you proposing parking or are you not proposing parking? Because you can't have it both ways.
Sir, that is an absolutely excellent question. We had that question ourselves. Let me just start at the beginning. I do have some additional material to hand you, including additional signatures in support. So I just want to update that list that you have.
Yeah.
There are additional signatures, two additional signatures here. Same list, more signatures.
So this is, so in addition to the number I cited before, there's another two from 164 and 168 Hampton. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
So I've also handed you just a couple of photos of adjacent properties, showing the same condition that is proposed on this application, and then some 3D renderings of the subject proposal. So in answer to the members' question, Mr. Chair, I can't agree more. We discussed this, and either if there's a parking space there, then there are variances that are not needed. However, if there is not a parking space there, it doesn't meet the definition of a parking space. So they are absolutely in conflict. However, in an abundance of caution, we can't disagree with the zoning examiner, who is responsible for clearing the building permit. So we've accepted these are the variances to be presented. In our submission, there is adequate space in the front yard for a vehicle to be parked, fully off-street. However, it doesn't meet the definition of the size of a parking space. So we're in essence doing both. There is a ability to park a vehicle fully off the municipal right-of-way, however, that space does not meet the definition of size for a legal parking space.
Whose definition?
The zoning bylaws, for the size of the parking space.
Because right-of-way management is clearly supporting that parking space. Have you seen their report?
Yes. They understand that there is the ability to park a vehicle off of the municipal right-of-way. And we don't also, we don't have any objection to the condition from right-of-way management indicating that they would like some permeable pavers.
So wouldn't it have been appropriate, then, to request a variance for a smaller-sized parking space that would then match with your request to provide a, I think the solution that you have, which is to provide the parking space in front of the building, makes sense. I can't vote for that and no parking because that doesn't make any sense to me. So at this point, I'm inclined to not support variance number one and support variance number seven. But you said that the bylaw does not, does not recognize that parking space because of size.
So just to clarify, bylaw, variance number seven is that a parking space may not be located in a front yard, so-
And then this proposal is you can put it in the front yard.
That's right. So I would even say that if it doesn't meet the definition of a parking space, and by nature of number one, we are not providing a parking space, if this committee is so inclined, I would say that number seven would be the variance that wouldn't be needed because there is no legal parking space in the front yard. However, we do have to go for a parking permit after this process. Should the committee approve this, we still have to apply to the city for a front yard parking permit. And if there was a decision saying that there was no parking space in the front yard, we wouldn't be able to get that permit.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think instead of saying zero parking spaces will be provided, maybe it should say that the required parking space will not be provided.
Or an undersized parking space, maybe-
That's variance number one.
Well, front yard parking's not permitted, so that's, and then the next variance is to allow for the front yard parking space. So they're not providing the required parking onsite, which is usually in the, behind the main front wall to a garage or in a garage. And now, and then they're asking for the front yard parking pad, which is also not permitted.
Madam Secretary-Treasurer, you're suggesting that number one should read, in this case, the required parking space will not-
Be provided.
Will not be provided. I think that makes more sense.
I would agree with that, and that way, when we apply for the parking permit, they will see that the committee saw a parking space in the front yard.
So how do we account, how do we, if you say parking space will be located in the front yard and it doesn't meet the requirements of the bylaw, don't you have to have a variance with respect to the width or length of the parking space?
That's not how the zoning examiner-
Through you, Mr. Chair. If the parking space was being provided in the rear yard or in a garage but didn't meet the measurements, then yes, you would have that standard, variance to the standard for the size of the parking space. But in this case, they're not providing the parking space as required in the location.
So there's nothing to prevent the city from, should they want to, moving a parking pad in the front yard that's smaller than-
No, you'd have to do both variances.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but both variances. But you're saying that because it doesn't meet the bylaw in terms of where it's placed, then it doesn't have to meet the bylaw in terms of width or length?
So they're not providing the required parking space, but they are asking to have a front yard parking space, which is not permitted, and they need a variance for that.
Okay, so we don't have to concern ourselves, or the bylaw's not concerned about the size?
Madam Secretary-Treasurer, I'd argue that one and seven are complementary variances. After that, they go to Transportation Services, and then they get their front yard park permit through them.
If they need one, if it's wholly on the applicant's property, they may not need one. There's different rules for different areas of the city.
It's not as if, Mr. Sekura, that you're foregoing the parking space at all, certainly on your plans before the committee, that it will have a parking space there and that you will be going to Transit, your intention would be to go to Transportation Services. Recognize that as the lawful front, the, under the front yard parking bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely. And the Transportation Report clearly identifies that. We have no issue with that.
I just had a question, sir. Through you, Mr. Chairman. There was, have you seen the report from City Planning dated March 21st?
I have. I just want to confirm the date. Yes.
They're recommending that variance number one be refused and that the, you have a front basement walkout be removed.
Yes.
And I'd like your thoughts on that. Their, their, they seem to be, their comment was that it's not an established context in the area for the property to have front wall-
Excuse me, I think Planning's recommendation is variance number four be refused.
Yeah.
It's noted-
Variance four, yes, correct. I'm sorry. Yes, variance four related to building depth be refused, but also removing the front basement walkout. What are your thoughts on that? Planning indicates this as not part of the neighborhood.
Okay, so I have two comments on that. Number one is that there isn't a variance to actually permit the front walkout. The front walkout is permitted, number one. Number two, the depth that is in number four is related to the below-grade portion of that front walkout. So I think that's how they're making the connection between the walkout and the depth variance. Also, the photographs that I handed you, so they say that that's not characteristic of the area. The photographs that I handed you show that the immediately abutting houses have a basement, front yard, walkout. So I'm a little bit perplexed as to how Planning made that-
I would, I would argue that they probably said that because with respect to the photograph she was submitted, they're really not view, viewable from the street. I wouldn't have seen them from when I, when I replied.
Absolutely.
So I think you're correct in that way, but thank you for the clarification.
Those are adjacent houses?
Pardon me?
Those are adjacent houses?
Yes, number 163 and 1/2 and number 163, both right beside the subject property. In addition, the 3D photos we had created specifically addressed the fact that you cannot see the basement walkout from the front. It's up on the screen right now. So we received a phone call from Planning the day prior to their issue of this report. We had these 3D renderings prepared to demonstrate to them, you couldn't see it, and prior to us sending them these renderings, they issued this report. So when we contacted them subsequent to their issuance of the report, all they said to us was, we're not changing our report, address it with the committee. So as you can see from the 3D renderings, you cannot see this basement walkout from-
Is it actually on the side?
It, yes, it comes down from the side. That's right, exactly, right there.
Okay, so I just wanted to get back to this parking, so I'm clear. We give you approval for a parking space located in the front yard, and you go to get a permit for front yard parking. They decide there whether it's adequate or not. Is that adequate size? It's not a bylaw, a zoning bylaw that governs at that point?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's correct. And it wouldn't be, the size of it wouldn't be coming back in front of this committee. They would just be issuing a permit or not issuing a permit.
Do we have any further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm persuaded, still persuaded by the Planning Department's recommendation, and the fact that there's been subsequent conversation, and they will not withdraw these requests indicates to me that they feel strongly about them. So my recommendation is that approve the application with the change to variance number one to read. In this case, the required parking space will be provided.
Will not be.
Will not be provided, pardon me, and that variance number four is not approved, and that the front basement walkout is to be removed. I think with those changes, the application, in fact, meets the four tests and constitutes appropriate development for the neighborhood. But without those changes, I'm unable to support it.
Do we have a secondary? No. Do we have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've been out to see the site. I was concerned at first with the issue with the walkout because it appeared that there weren't any other type of, that type of construction on the street. But after having seen the photos, it's obviously that they're there. With, so what the applicant's proposing, in my view, is certainly in keeping with the neighborhood, because there are front basement, it's just that this one is perhaps more visible than the other ones. But it doesn't take away from the fact that there are basement walkouts on the street, so it's not an unusual architecture. With respect to the parking space, he is providing a, it may not comply with the zoning bylaw, but it will comply with the municipal code and, as described by Transportation Services. So I'm prepared to move the revised application with variance number one, change to read, "In this case, the required parking space will not be provided," and I'm prepared to move approval of the subject application subject to Transportation Services' conditions.
I second that motion. All in favor? All opposed? At two to one. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
And urban forestry conditions?
Oh, and urban forestry. Thank you, Madam Secretary-Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman.
Urban forestry condition number three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next application is number five. 455 O'Connor Drive. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition above. Before us on this application, we have materials supplied by the applicant, a staff report from right-of-way management, and a petition signed by 447, 449, 451, 456, 459, 461, O'Connor Drive, 1822, 23, and 32, Judith Drive. Your name, sir?
Good morning. My name is Trevor Gaines. I'm the agent here on behalf of the owners. So as described in your descriptions, exactly what we're proposing to do in the submitted photographs, I don't know if they're in your file, but up on the screen, photograph number one, that's the existing kind of one-and-a-half-story dwelling. There is a one-story garage portion to the south of it. We're looking to pull that whole roof off and come straight up on the footprint of the house. So a lot of these variances are just relating to that existing footprint. The existing garage, at one point in time, I think was a carport that was enclosed. So we have to, you'll notice on the site plan in the application, we're pulling that garage off. We're going to put proper foundations on it and whatnot. But our building length variance of 17 meters and change is actually what we see right now, and we're just going straight up on it. Unfortunately, this area of East York has got a 45% floor space index, which is very low. The lot is a little undersized, and this is just one of these properties that no matter what we do, we're going to find ourselves here at the Committee of Adjustment. So the numbers on paper are high as far as floor space and coverage compared to what the bylaw is reading, but we look at where we start at. The existing floor space of the house, as it stands right now, is at 65%. And then when we add that second floor, it pushes it up to the requested minor variance. Similarly, with the coverage, the coverage of the house right now is 45% as you see it. The only increase in coverage is really, there's a porch at the front that we're going to put a roof on for the owners, and that's under one bylaw and under the other bylaw with the coverage, which is like a 49%. When the garage goes and we put it back, then the zoning examiner's, you know, it's gone, it's new. So again, we're pushing the coverage, but it's just a result of the existing house. With these high numbers, we did talk to all the neighbors. Like you said, we have the petition in support. That's just the map highlighting. There's the subject property. All the highlighted greens are all the neighbors that we talked to that could get a hold of. They had, that signed the petition. So pretty much everybody that can see the house has no issue. And in my opinion, I think these, these minor variances are minor. I think they're very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I stood right at the corner of Milton and Judith and just kind of took around. And the bottom three photographs, there's lots of development in the area. There's lots of two-story houses in all directions, including the backyard across the street and up the street. So the committees approved very similar variances throughout this whole neighborhood on both panels. So again, we think it's very minor, and we wish, seek approval.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, did you get a chance to take a look at the comments from Transportation Services dated 22nd of March 2018?
Yeah, I read it. I understand because the definition of a driveway and parking space, the driveway has to lead to the parking space. So in my opening comments...
Because when I, when I was out there to see the site, it's, you do have, the driveway is, looks like it's been recently, has some nice interlock in there, and this is the part they want torn up. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think what happens if, maybe the site plan might show it better, but it looks like the existing garage, which was now converted at some point in time to a, there's an entrance in it. And then when this carport was built and sometime in history, the driveway was widened. So we have no problem to pull up that and basically allocate the driveway portion in front of the garage only and convert the widened portion.
But to emphasize, though, the width of the driveway is not unusual for that neighborhood.
It's not unusual, but because we have a single-car garage, then the driveway has to be maximum three meters.
But you're okay with Transportation Services?
It's part of, yeah. Otherwise, we, we would probably need, you know, funny enough, we don't have any landscape issues as far as hard and soft landscaping. But the definition of parking in a driveway is that the parking space has to lead to a parking, or the driveway has to lead to a parking space. In this case, if someone parks on that portion to the north, they would park in front of a door, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm very familiar with this site as well. I disagree with my colleague. I don't believe that that driveway is consistent with the, with the driveways in the area. But then you're not disputing the issue at all.
No.
Unless our, unless my colleagues have further questions, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the right-of-way management condition. I believe that this is appropriate development for the neighborhood and clearly meets the test for variance, and I'm happy to move approval.
Do we have a secondary?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With the right-of-way conditions?
Number six, 17 Lakeview Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a third-floor addition with a rear deck, a rear two-story addition with a deck, a rear one-story addition with a deck, a new front porch with a deck above. And before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a staff report from Planning and from Forestry, and a four-signature petition in support. Your name, sir?
I'm the agent, Gary Delman. The proposal is for removing an existing first-floor addition and putting in a two-story addition, plus a walkout at the front. The proposed building is in keeping with what's existing in the neighborhood. The length of the building, although it exceeds the bylaw, is not any greater than the adjacent properties. The plan is to maintain the front facade of the house. Several other houses adjacent have front walkouts as well.
Are you aware of the conditions on the staff report, three?
Yes, I am. The conditions are essentially what we're asking for.
You are talking about the conditions described in City Planning's report of 22nd of March?
The City Planning report?
Have you, have you seen that report for, dated 22nd of March, from City Planning?
Yes.
And you're okay with their conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. I think we've had the applicant, as, we have a report from City Planning that indicates that they have concerns with an unconditional approval, and the conditions that they have put forward are satisfactory to the applicant, and I think will lead to good development on the site and are minor with respect to the official plan and the zoning bylaw. So I'm going to move approval of subject application, subject to the conditions described in City Planning's report of the 22nd of March 2018 and urban forestry conditions.
Do we have a secondary? All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seven, 122 Glenwood Crescent. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a ground-floor bay-window addition on the south elevation. Before us, we have the materials submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, a staff report from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. We have support from 120 Glenwood, and then 12 form letters also in support. What's your name, madam?
Good morning, Mr. Chairperson, members of the committee. My name is Jamie Cool, and I am the agent attending on behalf of the owners of 122 Glenwood Crescent.
Do, we may not need any presentation. This seems to be relatively minor. Do we have any, any questions?
Are you aware of the recommended conditions from urban forestry, ravine, and natural features?
Yes, we are.
And are you in agreement with them?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Conditions?
Conditions about protecting trees and no great changes. They're from urban forestry, ravine, and natural features?
Yeah, I didn't think that that was a condition.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the two conditions recommended by urban forestry, ravine, and natural features. I believe this constitutes reasonable, appropriate development for the area and is minor in nature and maintains the intent and purpose of both the official plan and the bylaw.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I have it. I just didn't think it was...
Number eight, 73 Hillcrest Drive. The purpose of this application is to legalize and to maintain the existing rear detached garage. And before us, we have materials supplied by the applicant, correspondence in support from the Hellenic Home for the Aged, and three signature petition in support. Your name, sir?
John Sibinik. I'm the agent.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleague has any questions on this, I believe this is an extremely minor application that doesn't warrant...
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
...presentation, and I'd like to move approval. I believe it clearly meets the four tests and is extremely minor in nature.
Secondary?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, committee.
Number nine, 11A Grandview Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing front, first, second, and third-story additions, a rear three-story addition with rear grand, and third-floor decks, and a rear detached garage. And before us, we have materials supplied by the applicant, staff reports from Planning and Transportation Services, and correspondence and concern from 8 Albemarle Avenue. Your name, sir?
Good morning. My name is Sean Galbraith. I'm a planner here on behalf of the applicant, who is also here as well as the architect. A few housekeeping items to start, if you don't, if you don't mind. We have five letters of...
If I could ask, Mr. Chairman, sir, have you seen the comments from City Planning dated March 20th?
I will be getting to those.
And the comments from Transportation Services?
We're deleting some variances this morning.
So if you could perhaps focus on those two, unless the committee has any other...
I also have letters of support if you'd like them, or...
Thank you.
These are all new?
They are all new, yes.
All right. 12 Grandview, 16 Grandview, two Grandview, one Albemarle. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will be deleting the variances that were of concern to the, to the neighbors and planning. Under the new bylaw, it's variances number five, number seven, and number 10. And under the old bylaw, it's variance...
A moment.
Sorry.
A moment. Five, seven, and 10?
And under the old bylaw, six and seven. These are the variances pertaining to the garage setback and the height of the garage.
Okay.
The, so the number of variances goes from 17 down to 12. Of the remaining 12, three are in existing condition. The, what is proposed is basically a third-floor top-up using the existing footprint of the building, which is a very small building, and then a two-story rear addition. The third portion, third-story portion aligns with the adjacent neighbor. So they're, they've taken into account any potential shadow from extending a third floor all the way back. The front of the building has an enclosed front porch, which aligns with, again, the neighbor to the side. And enclosed porches and three-story buildings are very common in the neighborhood. The density is basically because of the footprint. No depth variance is required, so it's not, it's not a significant overbuild for the property. If you have any questions, I'm happy to...
Are you in agreement? So you've withdrawn the two variances that were of concern to Planning. There are two conditions for approval they're recommending. Are you aware of those?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, with respect to the issue of the setback of the garage, are you prepared to move that back so it's no longer going to be a problem for the future conveyance?
Yes, so we're removing that variance entirely, so it'll be just shifted back to, so that no variance would be required.
Okay, thank you.
And we've confirmed that it doesn't then also trigger a landscape variance. So it wouldn't generate new ones.
Mr. Chairman, unless there are further questions, I'd like to move approval of the revised application, which has variance five, seven, and 10 to the new bylaw, and six and seven to the old bylaw deleted, subject to the two conditions proposed by Planning Department in its memo of March 20th, 2018, one dealing with the height of the front porch and the other restricting no services to the detached accessory structure. The requirement that was recommended by right-of-way management no longer applies because the variance is, has been removed. I believe with those changes, Mr. Chairman, the proposal is, in fact, appropriate development and meets the other tests for variance, and I'm pleased to move approval.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application is number 12, 30 Elmer Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a one-story side addition, and a basement secondary suite. Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant... Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a report from Right-of-Way Management, support, and eight signature petition in support, and correspondence of, of concern from 28 Herbert Avenue. Your name, sir?
Good morning. My name is Felix Laich. I'm an agent for the applicant. Yeah. The proposal, after the study of the neighborhood, it shows that the proposal is in line with the current developments, also enassing and volume. Also, the comparable proposals which were submitted to the Committee of Adjustment in prior hearings were approved in terms of side yard setback, depth, or FSI. Regarding the report of parking, we're not changing anything to the parking situation right now. There's a space between 28 and 30 Elmer Avenue, which is considered by zoning examiner as a driveway, but it's not a driveway. It's too narrow. It's less than ninety, eh, less than two meters and can't be used for car access to the rear. That's a driveway, so-called, sorry. This is what it looks right now. And basically, part of that will be covered with the side addition, one-story side addition, still creating setback far from the street so that there's still space for bike and motorcycle parking as it's used right now. And the drive leading to this is currently used by the owner. This is the property, and the car here is placed in the front yard on the drive leading to this property.
And you should put that back up, please?
So that parking isn't on your property exclusively, it's on shared park?
No, it's exclusive. It's a private drive leading to.
Totally on your property.
That carpet just shown right there is on city allowance, but there's space enough on the private property.
On the neighbor's property.
No, no. Completely not.
And that parking space is entirely within the confines of your own property limits?
Yes.
Not on the municipal boulevard?
No, there's five meters and 16 in front of the main wall on 65.
Are you aware of the, of the report we had from Right-of-Way Management?
I just.
That if you submitted for a parking space in that area, they would have no objection to it. You're aware of that?
Yep.
Are, is that your intention, to submit for approval? I have a question. If that's the case, is variance number four required?
Variance number four?
You will be providing a parking space?
Yes, I will need a parking space, and zoning bylaw doesn't allow parking in front of the main wall unless you have something behind the main wall as well.
You're going to apply for a permit. Is that right?
Yeah. But zoning still.
Okay. Now, this is on private property, apparently. Okay. It says here, no parking spaces are required, are, are provided.
I think, Madam Secretary Treasurer, is this the same as the one we had previously, where it should have read, the required parking space will not be provided?
Well, if you, through you, Mr. Chair, if you, sorry.
The parking is in the front yard.
Item 12, right?
On private property.
Yeah. Let me just get to where we're supposed to. No, the site plan doesn't show any front yard parking pad.
Okay, but.
The picture?
The existing condition has parking in the front yard.
Right.
My question is, is, it doesn't sound reasonable that variance number four is required because he's going to subsequently provide parking. What is the reason for putting variance number, approving variance number four?
Because currently, the plans don't show any parking on the site that you have before you. I don't know what was submitted when they went for the zoning review. If they don't show a parking space on the plans, then that was reviewed as there's no parking being provided.
Okay.
If the parking space is on the city boulevard, completely on the city boulevards, then there's a right-of-way issue. But if you look at your site plan, there's no, there's no front yard parking pad.
No, fair, fair.
There's a, currently, there's a driveway leading to this.
No, I appreciate that. I, I'm just trying to make sure that you, the variances reflect what you're asking for. It seems to me that your intention is to provide for front yard parking.
Yeah.
Your intention is to ask for approval of that. I want to make sure that what we have before us is consistent with that objective.
Well, what if, what you're doing is asking us to recognize the existing situation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. You're not proposing to change the area landscaping, everything with respect to the front yard parking, you're just recognizing an existing situation.
Correct.
Thank you.
So Anita, are we, are we posing any problem by approving variance number four?
Well, all the staff reports indicate that there's no parking shown in the front. I mean, the staff report from Right-of-Way Management says, the proposal does not indicate the front yard landscaping is not to be changed. It does not illustrate a parking space.
Okay. So.
Doesn't say front yard parking.
So will your client be able to apply for a parking pad in front if we approve this variance that there's no parking space provided?
Is there a license for the front yard parking?
I don't know. I'll ask. Do you have a license for the space that's there now?
Currently, there's no license because it's a driveway leading to what is, like, parking space also.
Has to be behind?
Yeah, behind, which is not. It doesn't request a car parking space. It can also be for motorbikes, bicycles. That's what the bylaw.
When you ask for approval of the parking pad, do we need, do you need a variance that?
I'm not sure.
I don't want you to have to come back.
I know.
If, if you could solve this problem too.
Like, I would, I could see that there's no parking space provided behind the main, front main wall as, that is the clear statement, because the zoning requests for parking space behind the front main wall, and we don't have that.
As my colleague said before, we, we dealt with one earlier today in which we said there, no, the required parking space will not be provided, which allowed the owner to go and apply for a parking permit.
I'm good with that. Yep.
Can I add a variance?
No, no, we're not adding a variance. We're just.
I, I, I could suggest, Mr. Chairman, that the applicant's not proposing to change anything in the front yard. The parking is there, he's not proposing to change it. We could simply put a condition in that the existing front yard parking be provided to the satisfaction of Transportation Services, and nothing changes.
But he still needs a zoning, he needs a variance stall.
He won't need a variance because the stall is completely on his own property.
But front yard not parking is.
Front yard parking is what?
Not permitted.
But that's dealt with through, that's, would be dealt with through the municipal code.
Front yard parking requirements are different word by word. In some areas, they're prohibited under the municipal code, even though zoning is part of it, you can apply for zoning here. So I, I don't know if this is the same situation as the one you had previously.
If the applicant provides, gets approval for front yard parking totally on his own property, independent of what he said here, subsequently, if he gets approval for a parking pad in the front yard, and it's all on his property, not on the public right-of-way, but, but if he, if, if that actually, oh, okay.
All right. But the other application.
Do you want to go by what's been submitted, the application, based on a zoning review? These are the variances identified. I wouldn't try changing it at this point.
No.
But the other application, as I remembered, had, was, we gave, we, there was a variance which provided for parking in front of the main wall. So we're not, this one doesn't have that variance. So if.
I don't know that it's required.
Yeah.
I don't know what the zoning examiner looked at when they prepared the zoning review.
Okay. Are you satisfied, sir, that if we pass these variances, particularly number four under the new bylaw and number five under the old bylaw, saying no parking spaces provided, that your client's going to be able to get permission to park?
Yes.
You are?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do we have any further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I don't, we can't guarantee anything. All, all we can deal with is what's before us and is, that we've been told this is what was generated by the plan examination. Based on that, I would like to move approval of the application as submitted, subject to no conditions. I believe it clearly meets the four tests.
Do we have a second here?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number 13, 12 Ozark Crescent. On this, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached, single-family dwelling by constructing a third-story addition with front dormer and rear Juliet balcony. Before us in this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, a staff report from Right-of-Way Management, eight signature petition in support, and. I'm on the wrong, I, yeah.
Your report from planning.
Yeah. A report from planning and correspondence and opposition from 54, 55, and 59 East Mount and 14 Ozark Crescent. Your name, sir?
Hello. My name is Savim Jokovic, the agent and designer for this application.
Yes.
So, yeah, we're, we're proposing to add the third-story addition to that existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling. We've triggered a few minor variances that I'll describe just briefly. First of all, regarding the height variance in terms of the total building height, just want to point it to the committee that the proposed building height is actually 10 meters. That variance of 10.16 meters is actually a result of the two skylights on top of the flat roof. So just quickly referring to the plans. If you have the front elevation in front of you there. So if, you can see here, the top of roof height is actually 10 meters, and it's only the skylights that are illustrated here on the cross section that trigger that variance So for that reason, I'd say the, you know, effectively, the total roof height is actually compliant. The other height variance relates to the top of.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Have you seen the report from planning?
I have, and we have no, we planned to build it as presented, so have no.
So they're recommending exclusion of the skylights from the building height?
Yeah. That's right. Yeah. Yeah, no, no objections there.
Can you tell me as well what the, what the existing floor space index is? The, it looks like it's a huge increase because you're going from .6 to 1.2, but you must be over .6 now, are you?
Yeah, we're currently well over .6. We're at 97% currently.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I got was from the existing building.
That's right.
.97.
.97, that's right. So we're adding only 369 square feet to propose an FSI of 1.2. So the other variance relating to the building height is the top of wall height. So you can see there in the cross section, the dotted line indicates the existing roof line. And maybe I'll just quickly reference the side elevation for you, maybe describe it a little bit more clearly. But this basically is the existing roof here. And what we've done is essentially extended that roof to get a bit more height in the third-floor area. But we are conscious of the fact that it is a semi-detached, and we don't want to alter the existing streetscape. So what we've done is actually, you know, left the roof plain as is here, and have inserted this dormer, which you see here. So the top of wall height is actually taken from here for the dormer. But just want to point to the committee that it was designed to blend quite nicely into the existing streetscape and kind of improve and revitalize kind of the classic character of this home. So moving on to the Eaves projections, I think those are both quite minor, kind of self-explanatory. Basically, replacing the, the roof and extending it re-triggers the existing non-conforming In regards to the side yard setback listed as item two and three, because we're building on top of an existing semi-detached dwelling with the party wall on that shared property line, that's triggered the side yard setback variances. But otherwise, the front yard, rear yard, and opposing side yard setback does comply with the variance. So I think that is also minor in nature. You sort of spoke to the FSI previously, so it is a nominal increase of 369 square feet. I'd just like to point out to the committee that, you know, we have controlled the overall building massing, so I think that FSI won't be discernible from the street. The landscaped open space is compliant. The front, west, and rear yard setbacks are compliant, and the overall building height, you know, not taking into consider, consideration the skylight is also compliant. In regards to the letters of objection, just to confirm, number 14 Ozark Crescent, which is on our immediate neighbor, their letter objection only states that they're concerned that the right-of-way be maintained. We have every intent to maintain that right-of-way as is. The other letters of objection are from the neighbors on the adjacent street, so our backyards abut one another. But just like to point it to committee there that the rear addition is only 12 feet wide, the third-story rear addition. The proposed rear yard setback to the rear face of the third story is 12.34 meters, which is nearly double the 7.5-meter rear yard setback requirement. So, I mean, with all due respect, I don't think we have much of an impact on their, on their properties. So in conclusion, I think the proposed development is appropriate and in keeping with the general character of the neighborhood. I think we're proposing a tasteful third-story dormer-style front facade, third-story addition. The addition has appropriate massing and will really revitalize kind of the character of this existing home. So considering we're only proposing to add an additional 369 square feet, you know, I do believe that all the variances are minor in nature, and I would ask the committee grant us the request of minor variances.
Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. I was out to see the site. I think what the applicant's proposing is certainly compatible with the neighborhood and minor with respect to the zoning bylaw and the official plan. So I'm going to move that the application be approved, subject to City Planning conditions dated 22 March 2018.
Okay. I'd like to second the motion. I'd also like to compliment you on the sensitivity of the way in which you address the streetscape and insertion into the streetscape. It's very well done.
Thank you.
All in favor, have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Number 14, 1637 Gerard Street East. Purpose of this application, to convert the ground floor of the existing two-story mixed-use building into office space. We have before us materials supplied by the applicant. Do we, your name, sir?
My name is Jamie Tran. I'm the agent for the owners.
Okay. Do we need any presentation?
I just had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Sir, could you tell me, you're converting the ground floor to office space. What type of office space do you propose to use it for?
It's a law office.
Oh, a law office.
Actually, it was, this whole space on the ground floor was used to be, used as commercial space. I don't know for how many years. I look back the record, probably at least 10 years, that was always used as commercial space.
Okay.
So when my, my client bought it over, they want to carry on the same use.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is an extremely appropriate development for the neighborhood. I believe it meets the four tests for variance, and I am pleased to move approval of the application and without any condition.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. You have your approval.
Thank you.
Okay. So we go back to number four, 133 Summer Hill Avenue. No, he's here. And the opposition, come and sit in this row up here. Purpose of this application is to construct a new detached two-car garage in the rear yard. Before us on this application, we have materials submitted. Before us on this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning and right-of-way management, a report from tree, from forestry, six form letters in support, interest and concern from fifty-two Summer Hill, one fourteen Shaftesbury, and one oh five Summer Hill, and opposition from one oh eight, one twelve, one eighteen, one twenty Shaftesbury, fifty-two, and one ten Summer Hill, and from the Summer Hill Residents Association. Your name, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, my name is David Smith. I'm here representing the homeowners of one thirty-three Summer Hill. Before you is a proposal that would have seemed relatively straightforward. Variances are all minor and technical for the most part. Obviously, by the intention that it's drawn, there's been some contentious issue over, primarily, my understanding, the encroachment into city property and the attempt to utilize this portion of, we'll call it neglected space, to some sort of standard. We're really trying to maintain what has been an existing condition for a very long time. We are completely aware that this now has to, pending C of A decision, go through a committee, community council review of whether or not there's merit to this appropriate use of city space. We've looked at every configuration and design for this garage, and this is the proposal that requires the least amount of disruption to the space, allows for the safest line of sites and the safest access in and out of the property. There is an existing curb cut, so there's no loss to parking. We would actually be adding a space to the desperately needed street parking by being able to park two cars back here. There was concern over the tree and damaging that. We obviously have no intention of damaging the tree, it will be preserved, and construction of the garage will not inhibit anything with regards to that. We're not seeking any variances with regards to height or massing from the point of view of terrain radiuses and the like. It's basically the best we can do for the space. For context, this location is at effectively the end of Summer Hill Avenue and where it converges with Shaftesbury. There are a few houses further to the, we'll call it the northeast, and the rest of the neighborhood sort of to the northwest. We have signed support from the neighbors directly to either side and behind that would all be most impacted by this. They're aware of the proposal and highly supportive. The vast, well, all of the opposition comes from neighbors further removed from the property. I'd be happy to answer any question.
I have, I have a question, sir. You're proposing the garage with a substantial encroachment into municipal road allowance. Do you understand the impact of what that has on the homeowner? The person who actually proposes that encroachment would have to, if community council even approved it, you're looking at having to pay substantial fees every year to keep it there. It would, the, an agreement would have to be registered on title to the property, which means it then becomes an encumbrance, which could possibly make it difficult to sell a house in the future.
Fully aware.
So I, I want you to, your, your client needs to be perfectly clear that, quite frankly, as a homeowner, this would be the last thing I would want to do, is to get into a legal agreement with the city to put a building on their property. Because in my view, it's, it might be a short-term solution to a problem, but long-term, everyone who puts something on road allowance that consists of a structure like this is taking a huge risk that potentially can devalue their property. So I want to be very clear that your client knows what they're getting into when they propose this.
I, I'm completely aware of the implications of the proposal. We wouldn't have put forth this application to committee without first talking to transportation, and the people that we spoke to said that they would highly support this. They saw no issue with the development, but, but, you know, as part of the procedure, said that you have to go through committee of adjustment first for the private side. That's not to say that this doesn't have to go through an extensive review by city council, community council, pardon me, to evaluate the merits of it, right? And during that process, there will likely be negotiations, discussions over the specific encroachments and what they look like, if they even materialize. But their point simply was, we had to address the private side of the conversation first, which is why we're here.
What percentage of this garage will be over city property, and what percentage over your client's property?
It's slightly more than fifty percent is on city property, and even that's up to, up for debate, because none of these variances pertain to the size of the garage. So we still have the flexibility to adjust that. Whereas simply, I mean, primarily, the conversation today is whether or not we receive the variance to access it off of Shaftesbury versus the lane. If you look through the, the variances that we're seeking, you know, irrespective of the duplications, really, that's, that's the only one that comes up.
Would you clarify, you're drawing A zero-one, which indicates the proposed garage. I want to make sure we've got it correct, that the, the public ownership is, as you say, about half of the garage, and it's from one corner to the other. Do you have that drawing? I'm wondering if we might put it on-- Yeah, I wonder if you might put it on the overhead, because I suspect that all the submissions are going to deal with an understanding of-- Yeah, could you leave that on for the subsequent presentations as well? Thank you. And it's this, just to clarify, this portion here is on the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Where do you access, where do you drive into the garage? Where are the garage doors up there?
Yes, yes. And I can, can I, I'll try and put next to it a picture, because I wanted to put, this sort of will help as well. So those two vehicles are the homeowner's vehicles? That's the subject corner that we're discussing, that's the, so to the, to the right of the two vehicles is an existing garage that also encroaches onto City Boulevard. That's the existing curb cut that they access to park there.
And those vehicles are pointed towards the area that would be the entrance to your proposed garage?
You got it, exactly. So we're effectively trying to maintain this condition. They would drive off of Shaftesbury into the garage.
Thank you.
So you have to go to community--
Council, yeah.
Council.
For the public side of the conversation.
And persuade them that you should be allowed to, I don't know what you do, call it, rent it?
Encroach, yes.
Encroach and rent the encroachment?
Yep, the, an encroachment agreement is--
Area yearly fee, et cetera.
Yes. And, and obviously, and there's correspondence to this in the application, that there's no guarantee. I mean, I think Nino Pellegrini pointed it out, that it's, it's a process. Like all encroachments, they're typically refused at first, and then you make an appeal. It's a very lengthy part of the process. But considering the obvious potential benefits, you know, in consideration of your comments with regards to fees, there is, there is some value in trying to pursue this, and this is why the homeowner has asked us to.
So you need our approval first to be able to go to--
Exactly.
--community council?
This is the private side of the conversation.
But even then, you don't, there's no assurance that you're going to get--
No guarantees, no, for sure.
Okay, let's hear from the opposition then. Do you have a spokesperson?
Got two.
Two? You're not going to cover the same points, I hope?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thanks.
A little bit organized. We, or we try. My name is Debbie Briggs. I'm Debbie Briggs, I'm the president of the Residents Association.
Yes.
I think we're still good morning, good morning. You have our letter, and I will not repeat its content, but simply address some last-minute comments submitted by the applicant's designer. Another SRA board member will address the issues before you. One, the SRA had engaged the applicant in a conversation, and it expressed its major concerns directly by a delegation of board of members at an in-person meeting at the applicant's house. Two--
Could you just tell us what your objections are? I appreciate that there's been a process of discussions, et cetera.
Okay, but let me--
Yeah.
Let me just try and see, then tell me the next time, okay? The much-touted support of some of the adjacent neighbors was obtained, at least as we understand from, from some neighbors, without explanation of the city's policy of refusing non-permitted building encroachments on the right-of-way. Access to the garage should be made from the rear lane, as is in the case present for all properties with the frontage on the lane, in order to maintain a coherent streetscape along Shaftesbury Avenue. One thirty-five Summer Hill has no frontage on the laneway, and the encroachment of its antique garage is grandfathered. In order to preserve safe-site angles and to represent longstanding city policy, the garage should be located on the applicant's own property. The request for a minor variance to locate more than half of the required parking space in the form of an enclosed garage on property not owned by the applicant is not minor in nature and is without any precedent in the entire Summer Hill neighborhood. I respectfully request that you refuse this application, and thank you.
Thank you.
So to clarify, you have two concerns. One, that part of the garage is being built on public property. The other concern was that you believe access for parking for this particular site should be off of the lane--
Like everybody else, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other concern was the safety.
Thank you.
And I will be returning to this photograph, which was, in fact, put before you earlier.
Do you want to put it on the overhead?
Put it on the overhead as well. In fact, it is on the--
Overhead now.
Oh.
I would simply address the four tests that are relevant for your consideration.
Can I ask you, and I'm just looking at this photograph--
Yes.
Does one thirty-three, at this time, have a garage?
No, it does not.
Okay, so they're just parking on the driveway there?
Yes, you can see the two cars that are surrounded by an outline of the proposed structure--
Yes.
And the two, the two cars, which would be obviously inside the, the structure. The white garage to the right is the grandfathered one-car garage that is, that is slightly on public property. Its corner is a little bit more than a meter away from the, from the sidewalk.
So that is some precedent, at least--
Yeah, of course.
--for a building on public property.
That is true.
Could I ask, though, that's an important point, does the person, you may not know, but the person, I think it's at one thirty-five, who has that aluminum garage encroachment, does he have an encroachment agreement with the city?
That I cannot tell you, sir.
Thank you.
And I don't know the date that it was constructed. It's been there for some considerable time. Okay, just to go through these, I mean, I, I want to focus on the variances. The first, the rear yard setback is, in our view, minor. I mean, it's, it's true that he's requesting a zero setback, but, but that's not the key issue here. The, the, the more important point are variances two and three, especially number three, which is the requirement in the zoning bylaw that a rear garage be on the lot that is owned by the user of the parking space.
I wanted to ask you, sir, about number two, access from the lane.
Yes.
It appears that there is a, I guess it's a telephone pole or a hydro pole with a wire off it, et cetera, which would affect the access from, if there was a garage built entirely on property owned by one thirty-three Summer Hill, it seems to me would be difficult to get access to that garage unless there were some accommodations or arrangements made to remove that pole or change it around.
That's correct, sir. The, there would be a requirement to move the pole. This has happened in other locations that, and obviously, that's an additional expense for the, as part of the construction of the garage. But that can be done, it's been done elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay, so the important point is that the third variance in particular is by no means minor, and it is not consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The zone, as noted, the, as set out in OP Policy four point one-eight, it's, the purpose of zoning bylaws is to ensure that development is compatible with the existing character of the neighborhood, with the existing physical character of the neighborhood. As you can see, a, the, this unfortunately isn't large enough to include the houses that are to the west, but, no, it's not, but this would create a, a large block building, thirteen feet high. I realize the height is not before you as a requested variance, but the height in conjunction with the location of the building is, we believe, a major incompatibility of the neighborhood. And in particular, the fact that the corner would be exactly a couple inches, a few inches away from the edge of the sidewalk, means that you have this mass, this thirteen-foot building coming right up to the sidewalk, totally inconsistent with the normal setbacks that one sees elsewhere in the street. The only non-conforming structure of this kind that actually does come into the Boulevard is the one that is to the right. As I say, that's relatively minor compared with, as you can see, compared with the mass and location of this building. The variances are not consistent with the intent and purpose of the official plan, which not only makes the same statements about the, about the importance of maintaining the physical character of the neighborhood, but also, also raises an issue which has been pointed out to you by urban forestry with respect to the tree, which you can see in the photograph. The, the applicants indicated in the letter of March twenty-sixth that they would change their plan to have slab construction rather than foundations, but the slab, of course, would, would add substantial weight and would also be an issue with respect to injuring the tree. So the issue of, that's raised by urban forestry is, is an important issue that is also before you. No changes, as, as four point one-five states, no changes should be made through rezoning, minor variance, or other public action that are out of keeping with the physical character of the neighborhood. This large, massive building right to the sidewalk is out of keeping with the area. It creates a precedent that is, we believe, a serious precedent, because it is coming right up to the sidewalk, and it would also create a dangerous condition for pedestrians and for cars exiting from the lane. With that, sir, I will close, unless you have questions.
No, sir.
So the, the present condition is that the owner of one thirty-three uses a driveway and parks in it as if there were a garage there. So, so when you talk about access in and out of this driveway, it, it seems to me would be no different than if there was a garage built there.
Yes, but what's different is the fact that, as you can see, the corner of the building is right beside the sidewalk. Somebody walking, somebody walking from the west, coming, coming from the west, would have to be at the corner before they would see around the corner to see whether the garage door is open and a car is backing out.
Yeah.
Somebody driving down the lane--
And, and the driver would also be disadvantaged and seeing--
And, and seeing somebody coming from the west, that is correct. The present situation is one where there is visibility, because there is no wall.
Yes, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Council. I'm making a very brief comment. I am a local resident of the area, and I'm a cyclist.
Your name?
My name is Rosaline Crooks, and I live on Summer Hill Avenue.
What number?
One thirty-three, one oh six, I beg your pardon, one oh six Summer Hill Avenue.
All right.
I'm, I'm a cyclist, and I've lived in the area for many years, and I have a great deal of danger. As I come around the corner, I see that the impediment at the corner of that garage could really cause a significant problem. I wouldn't be able to see people coming from the laneway, and people backing out of there also might not see me coming around the corner. also might not see me coming around the corner. Also, you think you have a number of pedestrians walking along there, and if they're coming along that road, coming up from the ravine or from the neighborhood, walking towards the subway, you wouldn't be able to see cars coming actually out of the laneway as well. So I just want to make the point that I think the fact that it impedes almost touching the sidewalk is extremely dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, please.
Number of items to speak to. So I can't speak to the scale of the representation, and massing and height and all of those developmental aspects are not variances that are to be heard today. We're really talking about access. For that, what I'd like to do is just swap out some images.
So it's obvious that this is a unique condition. This is not your average property.
So are you saying with respect to massing and height, et cetera, you comply with the bylaw, so the only real issue before us is?
We could build four meters as of right, right? So the height, the overall volume, as I said in my presentation, there's nothing stopping us through neighbor consultation of trimming it back to ease some of these concerns about the bulk. With regards to this concern about, we'll say, line of sight and safety, a lot of the objectives support the idea of access to a garage from the laneway. So changing the location of access doesn't negate the fact that you'd have a structure blocking the view coming from different angles with pedestrians and all of the sort. When we drive out of.
With respect, sir, I think they also object to being on the city property, so.
No, no, no. I completely appreciate that part of the conversation.
But I think with respect to access, when they're talking about the laneway, they're talking about a single-car garage on your client's property.
No, no. And what I would put forth is that this very process, in both the private side and the public side, is a way of trying to ameliorate a situation that is unique, right? It's evaluated on the merits in the sense that if you look at the site plan just to the right of the image, you can see the triangular chunk of property that my client is left with. That's what they'd have to park on. It does not suffice even the minimum bylaw for a parking size, and any structure, single-car or not, would require an encroachment onto city property. So we'd still come back with a single-car parking structure that could be the same height, could be a similar volume, that would be accessible from the lane. The conversation, and I apologize, the image is a bit skewed. Conversation about accessibility from the lane. This property tapers towards the laneway and Shaftesbury and the sidewalk. Again, it's an exceptionally difficult design scenario where you're trying to pick your battles, effectively. Access off of Shaftesbury, such that it's been for many years before the homeowners purchased this property, is the safest line of sight for everybody involved. When we drive out of City Hall parking garages, there are mirrors set up such that you can see around corners because, on some levels, blind spots are very difficult to deal with. I'm not saying that's a perfect solution, but it's not something that is completely unjustifiable should safety be the ultimate guiding concern with what this structure form takes shape as, right? I mean, from the point of view of access, irrespective of relocating the hydro pole and the issues that could come with who gets that in their backyard, the problem is that you have a narrowing of the pavement between the sidewalk and the garage at 133. You cannot negotiate two vehicles on any level of safety, barely one, in a turning radius that's, we'll say, the standard turning radius. So you get into far more difficult conversations about who can see what, how fast people are coming down the lane. All of it stems from this issue of this is a unique property configuration. It is not large. It tapers at the corner of the laneway. You don't have a lot of real estate to work with. It's difficult. There's no doubt.
Clarify for me the existing parking condition. On the photograph that we were shown, there's a car and a van.
Yes.
Parked side by side on paving. Is that legal parking, and who paved the area?
So it is effectively not legal parking, and in putting forth this application.
And who paved the area in the first place that allowed it to be used for parking?
That I don't know. Perhaps the previous. Yeah, absolutely. I have to believe, because I was told that the previous homeowners, and we have a lot of support from them, they used it in identically the same scenario, that it's been there for a fair amount of time. You know, the neighborhood has basically said, you know, we all kind of knew about it, we let it happen, which is totally fair. In going through this process, it was basically deemed that that was not an appropriate use of parking. And so I had to prepare this one here because the homeowner was basically told, like, well, look, you can only park one car on your property, and the other one has to go on the street. And so since, we'll say, two weeks into this application, that's been the configuration, is what you.
So I would look back, if that's the only parking space, what's wrong with this?
Well, that's the primary consideration, is that it's one parking space, and that, you can see, there's no room for any form of structure. There's no way of protecting the vehicle from the weather. That isn't even a zoning bylaw conforming parking-sized space, right?
Your client couldn't build a single-car garage entirely on his property?
You can see by the triangular shape there that no rectangle fits on that property that's less than the size of a Miata. And even then, how you get into it, open the doors, any of the regular functionality that would come with a garage requires us to encroach into city property.
Okay. But you have no problem parking? Well, so you've been told, your client's been told, they can park one car there and one car on the street?
Well, that's, well, basically, as of this application, bylaw enforcement came around and said you cannot legally park two cars there. So they went to get a parking permit.
Is one car parked entirely on your client's property?
In that configuration on its own. But if this was a zoning review application, the dimensions of that parking space are not conforming.
Okay. So can you park? Just, let me just finish my question. Sorry, Carl. I just want to ask if, is there parking on the street? Do you need a permit or what?
Oh, you need street permit parking, and it's absolutely congested. One of the benefits of this is that it would free up one for somebody else because parking, one of the largest objections in the original series of letters was a new curb cut would be required which would remove on-street parking availability. It's not the case. It's an existing condition. Nothing's changing. So this actually benefits the neighborhood by freeing up a car that is now parked somewhere on the street and putting on a piece of property that can't be used for anything else because it has to be maintained free so that the garage at 135 can clearly back out.
All right. Mr. Netfield has a question.
You mentioned that you don't have space here.
Yep.
But there is nothing that I've seen that would prevent you from building a garage in this area. Am I missing something?
So right at the hood of the vehicle is a fence. You should see mutual property line fence there. See the wood fence? Yes. So just behind that is the green space, the only green space of the backyard that you'd be reducing. And about four feet into that.
But you could do it. I'll use that area.
Sure. We could take the garage further into the rear yard, but at the resulting loss of valuable green space and the tree that is in question, because now you're moving close to the tree. So it's, again, this issue of, from a logical standpoint, is it better to try and utilize a piece of land that is literally collecting garbage and that my homeowner, my client, pardon me, has to maintain versus chewing into valuable downtown green space on a lot that's already subsized?
It seems to me that you're presenting an option of either losing some private green space, which is not desirable, or as versus creating what I believe to be, based on the information provided in my own assessment of this application, a severe safety problem. I think you're generating a very severe public safety problem with this application.
How would there be any difference of a safety problem between what's proposed versus a garage that you access off of the laneway?
Different. I think what my colleague's trying to say is because the corner of your proposed building is right up to the sidewalk, anybody who's driving off the lane really cannot see any vehicle that's approaching.
Well, unless we're doing stuff.
Can't see a vehicle approaching from the left until they're either over the sidewalk or close to the curb. That's not a desirable situation.
Okay, fair. I mean, irrespective of installing those three-way mirrors or whatever.
It's a blank wall. They can't see down.
Okay, okay. But if the variances are specific to not those issues, then we're not here to discuss the size of the building. It can be adjusted, right?
We're not going to get into a design exercise.
Exactly.
My colleague's made a very, in my view, a very valid statement. I think you should wrap up your comments, and let's move on to a motion.
I just have one comment. It's not a question. I don't expect you to address it, but it seems to me that when half this garage, and it's quite a large garage, is going to be on city property, it's not a, because that's variance number three. Parking space will be partially located on City Boulevard. It doesn't seem to me to be minor. The garage that's there now, your neighbor's, your client's neighbor's garage, looks like it encroaches somewhat, or I've been, we've been told it encroaches somewhat. That looks minor. This doesn't look minor to me. So unless my colleagues have any further questions, I think we're going to.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes.
I've been, we've certainly seen a lot of photographic evidence. I would thank the residents for coming out and speaking on this. From my perspective, I can understand the applicant's desire to get a garage, get their vehicles in an enclosed space where they're perhaps safe from potential vandalism and issues like that. In my mind, though, this is not the way to go about it. The type of encroachment that you're proposing to put into the road allowances will be extremely expensive in the long term. It will be very, very difficult for the city to administer. It becomes a cloud-on title for new owners. It's a bad idea all around. And I can't, to be perfectly honest, yes, there is a sight distance issue created by the location of the proposed building next to the sidewalk, but more importantly than that, I think it, from a property perspective, I would not want to have this cloud-on title to try and sell this property in the future. And I'm going to move that this application be refused.
Mr. Chairman, I have seconded the motion, but for different reasons. I would like to complement the opposition for their presentation. It was very comprehensive and, I believe, right to the point of the argument. You made a number of points, all of which I agree with. This is not a minor application. It's setting a new setback along Shaftesbury, which is undesirable, and creates a severe streetscape problem. We wouldn't probably entertain a house being brought up to the street line. Why would we entertain a garage being brought up to the street line? The issue of sightlines and blockage, they're serious. The lady that's a cyclist raised her concern, as a cyclist, as am I, as pedestrians, as children, as dogs, anybody, you can't see. So the issue of, I don't think the issue is so much using public right-of-way as you're putting a very large obstruction in the public right-of-way, which does have serious sightline problems. And I think it creates an extremely undesirable precedent for the area. I agree with all the points that were raised by the opposition, and I'm supporting the motion to refuse the application.
Hold in favor. Your application's refused, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition. Rear basement walkout, rear ground floor deck, rear second-floor covered balcony, and a rear two-story detached garage with a second-story storage mezzanine. Before us, we have materials supplied by the applicant, correspondence from Heritage, and a report from forestry. Who is going to make this presentation?
My name is, good morning.
Is there opposition?
Yeah.
Could you come forward here, please?
My name is Tony Valentine. I am the agent for the owner. These people are the owner of the property.
Okay.
Our proposal, as you have mentioned, is to do some renovation to the old house and to have a two-story addition at the back. In so doing, we come across several variances. But upon consultation with my client, we come to the conclusion that some of the variances we can eliminate and actually comply.
Okay. Could you tell us which variances those are?
Okay.
Is this after, pardon me, is this after discussion with the neighbors as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tell us which variances you're going to delete.
Variance is number one. We reduce it to the.
So that you comply?
Seventeen meters, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Variance number two. We will comply with 253 square meters.
Okay.
So we will reduce everything. Number three, we will also comply with that because it will just be a matter of relocating the walkout, which is nothing.
Thank you.
Okay. Number four.
Variance number three you're deleting?
Yes.
Yes. Number four, this is a variance because of the limited space.
Just tell us the variances that are being deleted or changed at this point.
Oh, just the one deleted, okay. Variance number five, we can comply with that one. We can move the building actually to comply with the setbacks.
Okay.
Variance number eight, we will comply and reduce the area of the garage to 40 square meters as required.
Okay.
Variance, oh, under bylaw 438-86, is almost the same as number one. It is the depth of the property.
Just a minute. Are you deleting number one under the old bylaw?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's just the same as number one anyway on the new bylaw.
Yes.
Number two, we are also deleting that because I don't know why it implies on the depth of the property which we are complying. So number three.
Hang on. So number two of bylaw 438-86, you're deleting that?
Yes, number two. And number three, we are also deleting that because our property is less than 17 meters. We don't exceed. So that is not an issue anymore. The rest is a variance that we cannot do anything about. Number five is one part we can comply, the others we can't.
Which part?
It's still a variance.
Comply with?
Number five.
Yeah, but which part of number five can you comply with? The rear lot line or the east and west side lot line?
On the east. Number five, we cannot comply with this one because it is required as three meters.
Okay.
Setback.
Okay.
So.
Number five stays in?
Yes. It is impossible because.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's a variance. And the rest are variances.
Okay.
So just to confirm then?
By the way, number six, upon consultation with our neighbor, we are reducing the height to comply.
You're deleting number six?
Number six, section bylaw 438-86, which is the height of the garage.
All right, so that's also number six under the new bylaw?
That's also number six in the old bylaw.
So does that mean that variance number seven of 438-86, is that being deleted? Because now you're reducing.
Yeah, because it's not a two-story anymore.
Okay, so.
I'm confused. The ones you just listed, but do six and seven under the new bylaw, do they both come out?
Yes.
So seven's deleted, under the new bylaw? Six and seven under the new bylaw and under the old bylaw are being deleted with respect to the height of the garage.
Because with respect to the height, we are reducing.
So let's just summarize here so we know what you're going forward with. So let's just, under bylaw 569-2013, the only vari- So let's just, under bylaw 569-2013, the only variance you're keeping is number four. Four and nine.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Number four and--
No.
No, that's number nine.
Four and nine? Okay.
Four and nine, yes.
Now, under 438-86, the only variance you're keeping is four and five and eight.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, so can I ask you about variance number nine, under the new bylaw, and variance number eight, under the old bylaw? You're chang-- you've changed the height of the garage, does that change the lot coverage?
It will change also the light coverage a little bit, because we will now comply with the other variance, which requires us to set it back, set back the garage away from the property line.
So what, so do you need--
So in actual fact, the garage will be smaller now, it will be 6.32 by 6.32.
So how many square meters and what is the lot coverage?
The lot coverage is 40 square meters for the garage.
Well, it says 39 square meters now, you're telling us you're reducing it. So what will it be after the reduction?
No, the garage actually is 58.50 square meters.
He says he's also moving it. Okay.
Right, but it's still the same size.
Okay, so the garage, the footprint of the garage will stay the same?
No, it will be a foot less than on each side.
Okay, well, that's not significant, so at, so let's just leave nine and eight in for now. Okay, so perhaps we, so is this an agreement you made with the neighbors?
Yeah, I think they have still some concern, but--
They still have some concern? Can we, can we, can you sit down and let us hear the neighbors' concern?
The only, I have a comment to make, though. If you were able to design within the bylaw--
Okay.
--and only required six rather minor variances, then why did you submit all of this? You're wasting our time.
No, it's--
Seriously, this is taking up valuable time in a public agenda, and you've just removed six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 variances, which clearly were not well thought out, or you wouldn't have requested them in the first place.
No.
I'm offended by this.
Yes, it was upon the discussion with the client and also the opposition, that we made some of this reduction and compliance to--
Well, we hear the opposition shaking their head that that isn't--
Yes, of course.
All right, so can, we'd like to hear from the opposition now.
Good morning, source men. My name's Kevin. I'm currently living 238 First Avenue. First of all--
Just a minute.
238 First Avenue.
Did you give us your last name?
My last name is Wayne, W A N G. First of all, I have never met my neighbor. That house is your tenants. I had never met them. They didn't even--
Please, please just address the issues of the variances.
Okay.
The variances that are left.
So all the variants, right?
Yeah.
I don't mind if they, they do everything under the law, by the law. Because the law present is for a reason, it's to give you a standard to everybody, to be fair to everybody. Clearly, everything--
This committee is statutorily recognized as a committee that provides minor variances because applicants aren't necessarily able to comply with the bylaw. So don't, don't tell us he's got to comply with the bylaw. Tell us what effect the variance would have. For example, number four under the new bylaw, instead of having 50% of soft landscaping in the rear yard, he's only going to have 31%. Does that affect you?
Yes, that would definitely affect me. For them to extend it to 50%, like, along the backyard, there's no one's houses standing to 50%. That's the reason why. Because if they extend it over the law, we're going to lose the privacy. Like, they're going to see exactly everything we do. And we're, obviously, we're going to also lose the sunlight. So for them to seal it wider, be bigger and higher, because our house is in the end of the street, so everything, like, all the leaves fall off the tree, it will fall into our house. It's like, every, every year, we have to clean it up, like, everything's, because our house is, is lower than their house, so everything, all the garbage will belong into our side. All the leaves will grow up our drain system.
That's not an issue we can deal with. So you got to tell us what impact you're going to, what impact? And what we're talking about is the reduction of soft landscaping and the building of a garage that's bigger than permitted?
Also, the garage--
And closer, and his additions will be closer on the sides than permitted?
Okay, I want to talk about the garage. Because our backyard alleyway, there's so many kids, like, walking along there. After school, I, all the kids coming by, and we have a dog park near to our neighborhood, so all the dog walkers, they go to the park, they walk the dog, they always use our backyard alleyway. It's really, like, so bad that there's not much view. On my right side, this, it's a big building. Every time I'm trying to come out from my, my, my backyard driveway, I have to, like, pay attention, like, make sure I don't hit anyone. And if they're going to put the huge garage at the back, it's totally going to block the view. It's going to create, like, dangers to any pedestrian and kids walking around the back.
You don't have a garage on your property?
I don't have a garage, but I do have a canopy. It's not, it's just a cover, not a garage.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? All right, Mr. Chairman. You have, did you, anybody else want to make comments on the opposition?
Do you want to make any comments?
To clarify, your concern is primarily privacy on your property?
Privacy.
And the location of the garage creating an obstruction and a safety issue for pedestrians at the back?
Yes.
Those are the two, did I get it all? That, those are the two points?
Yeah, those are two main points.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Mr. App-- Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Just address those points that--
The most important thing, I think, that we have to concern about is the limited space for the landscape, soft landscape area at the back. We wish we could make more, because that will give us more outdoor activities. But because of the extension that we are planning, as well as the garage that will be built, we are limited to an open space that we can use as a soft landscape area. The only thing that is not, that I can think of that we could add to that is if we reduce the deck, you know? And then we can add, how much, maybe another 10 square meters of soft landscape, we still will not comply, but at least, you know, we can increase it. We would like to increase it. The owner would like to have a big backyard, but we are limited to the existing site condition of the size of the lot and the structure that will be, that we are proposing. That's all. Now, in terms of the other issues that the opposition say, I think he was, he is concerned about the bylaws, that is, that we are applying for something that is not in accordance with the bylaw. I think that's why we are here for, you know? Precisely--
You needn't address that issue.
Precisely the reason why we are here, because we cannot comply with some of the bylaws.
Okay. What about safety of--
The safety issues with regards to, I don't know what specifically is the safety issue, because our garage is actually set back away from the laneway. So we have plenty of room to see what's going on, while the other garages are right on the property line. I don't know. I, I don't know what safety issue is there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do you have, do you have any questions, Mr. Chairman? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. Just to be clear, what we're dealing with here is a revised application, where the only, where the variances that are being requested are reduced down to variance number four, which is a bylaw 569-2013, and number nine of bylaw 5569-2013, and items number four, five, and eight of bylaw 438-86. Have I got that right, Madam Secretary of Transit?
That's right, thank you.
Okay. Just dealing with those particular variances, in that the applicant has revised his application and deleted a lot of the very controversial ones. I don't think what the applicant is asking for is out of keeping what the neighborhood or, or an egregious example of bad planning. So I'm prepared to support the revised application, subject to urban forestry conditions.
We will agree with that. We will do.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is number 11, 250 Shooter Street. And is the opposition here, sir?
Here.
Opposition, come forward. All right, to, the purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition and a secondary suite. On this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, a report from forestry, and opposition from 248 Shooter Street. Yes, sir, your name?
My name is Alfred Ajaporn, and happen to be the agent too at the same time.
Yes.
So, to the application that we actually put forward to the committee was, well, first it happens to be, because a couple of things that came up in our zoning review. One, rear yard, and this particular property happened to be, like, very small lot size, so rear yard itself, we don't even comply at all.
Which, which, what did you say, what don't you comply with?
We don't comply with item number four at all, based on what the requirement of a zoning bylaw for rear yard requirement. Yeah.
A rear yard setback?
It's only notice that I have. Yeah, I have that, that's the same one.
Yeah. Now, number, number four--
Number four.
--under the old bylaw?
Rear yard.
Rear yard setback?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we don't comply based on the lot size itself.
Yes.
So, and then the next one also is in regards to the size of the actual property itself. We're just keeping the same footprint that is currently there, and we're just adding the extension to it. But what actually brings us here, because I had had numerous amount of conversation with the zoning examiner, and the issue that we had was, because of the way the lot is located, there's no way you could even be, put, like, a basement walkout or anything like that. We would have done it the opposite way around, if we had given the opportunity, but we don't have that. So in order for us to do it was either propose a front door right off from the sidewalk, straight upstairs, but then in order to do that, we will be able to, if we do it that way, we get more space inside the actual units, either unit one or unit two. But if we go the opposite way of either proposing an actual hallway off from the main floor, we reduce the actual layout, and it doesn't actually allow a lot of the stuff that is being proposed off. So due to that reason, we had to come to committee of adjustment to justify, to see if we could be able to get an actual front entrance door that leads from the exterior to the second floor, instead of having the actual door on the second floor. Those are my main concerns about this particular issue, because what we're trying to do is in contest with the actual zoning bylaw and also with the Planning Act.
Okay, what's your current floor space index?
The floor space index that we currently have is actually, is 82.68 is what we have.
Six, eight, square meters?
Yes, sir.
And how is that in terms of times the area of the lot?
Well, because currently, right now, the, we've been over, we've been over the city encroachment, we in encroachment with the city right now, of about 10 inches onto city property currently. So we don't even comply on that aspect.
Just to clarify, your existing lot area is 891 square feet?
Yes, sir.
And the existing, the existing building is 573 square feet?
Yes, sir.
So that gives a FSI of about .65?
Yes, sir.
Or?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
How old is this building, just out of curiosity?
Oh, pretty old. Because we just even, in this particular construction site, we had to even go in for two different phases. So it didn't have no basement, it just had a crossface. So I put in the first application to create a natural basement in order to create, to carry the second floor above. So currently, right now, we in construction for the basement itself to be constructed, and then we'll carry up to the second floor after that is completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the opposition now?
My name is Robert Watson. My wife Margarita. We live in the adjacent property to this semi-detached home at 248 Shooter Street. I did write a letter to the planning on the weekend, and it was, I believe, posted on the city website on Monday morning. Does the committee have that letter?
Yes.
Our main objection is the second unit entrance onto the, on the main front facade onto Shooter Street. We think it will be a large problem for us regarding student housing we have in the neighborhood to the left, be the west of us. There's a group of townhouses that are student housing. The--
Do you clarify? I'm getting, why is the--
I have, we think that the, that's the, the student housing up on the screen, up on the, on the board there.
Per your houses and--
Our house is to the right of that.
Yeah?
Yes.
So which one is your house? The larger one or the smaller one?
The larger one.
Yeah.
We had a minor variance for a second floor addition back in 2010. Originally, both houses were approximately the same.
All right, so how does this student housing affect variance that are being requested?
It appears on the plans, on the interior plans, that there's six, six small bedrooms proposed with, in relation to small living spaces. Our concern is that it's, it could, it can very easily become a, an-- Our concern is that it's, it could, it can very easily become a, an investment rental-type property and rented to, to students by the, by the bedroom.
Sir, it's with the entrance, it's with the fact that it's six units.
Yeah.
Between your comments, you said the two entrances were a problem.
We don't want an entrance right adjacent to us, right beside us.
You have it immediately to your party?
Yeah, right on the party wall.
Yeah.
And we feel that the second entrance on the front of the building makes the building at two fifty an obvious rental appearance building. It's, it becomes obvious that it's a duplex-type residence.
Did you discuss this issue with the agent?
We did, yes, in the, in the corridor, in the hallway.
And you didn't get, and you're not satisfied with their response?
No, we haven't, we don't have a commitment to delete it. Like, I, I didn't hear that it was going to be taken off the agenda for the, for the meeting, no.
I thought we heard that it was very difficult to change the door, but...
I...
We'll let, we'll let the agent speak to that issue.
Okay.
Do you have any other concerns, sir?
In that same regard, I propose to create a, an entrance inside with, with a, with one entry door off the front, as, as exists now, and similar in keeping with the front facade of our home. And they would create then a interior common hallway and two doors going to each, each suite from the inside. Which, I don't have a problem with that. If it looks like a normal house from the street and, and not as a, as a duplex, I think it's in keeping with, with our home. And basically alleviates that concern. In, in that regard, I think it would, with a larger corridor, if the stair was included in the corridor, it would eliminate the, the first item with the maximum permitted floor space index. Or, sorry, the second, item number two on page one. The secondary suite is permitted with the, less than the floor area of the dwelling unit. I think it would then comply with that. And that, that a minor variance on that point would not be required.
Any other comments, sir?
No, I think our main, main, our main issue is the, the front appearance of the, of the facade on Shooter Street and the second entrance, second suite entrance directly adjacent to our property. We don't want it. If it, I would anticipate it'll, it'll be a rental, and we think there's going to be parties on that entryway and stairway.
Mr. Chairman, sir, you understand that the secondary suite's allowed as of right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he's...
It's, it's the entrance to it that I have issue with.
The entrance, but then you're, you're suggesting that he's not going to use it for, he's going to use it for a rental building?
I would, yes, I would anticipate that, yes.
Okay, but that's not Jermaine here, because he's allowed to have a secondary suite. There's no indication on the plans that he's doing a, some kind of an apartment building.
Correct, yeah. It's a second suite, yeah.
The point it is, I think, Jermaine, the point you have raised, and I just wanted to clarify, I've got this correct. We're not here to decide where he puts his front door. That's not our jurisdiction. But you've raised, I think, a legitimate concern about variance number two, that if variance number two is not approved, then the secondary suite would in fact be not as large as the dwelling unit that exists there, and that you were arguing that...
It would then comply.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you guys for hearing him on, but what Rob was actually speaking of was what we had actually discussed in the hallway in regards to a solution that we would have came up with, because based on back and forth with the zoning examiner, that was one of my actual solution to the zoning examiner, because I was trying to see how I could be able to solve the issue of the compliance of number two, because of size, because they're saying if the staircase, or even if we had put in an actual door entrance at the very top of the landing on the second floor, that would be in compliance to what the zoning requirement is. But because the owner was asking because of how it impeaches on the first floor, and then the space is not there, so it becomes even smaller. And you don't even have a sitting area, so then he said, "Go for the exterior door being directly from outside, straight up, so you could get the livable space on this main floor as part of what he's requiring to do." Because he's trying to put his parents in the house, and he was looking for a living space for them, actually. That's why we here with this minor variances.
Oh, you're, you're saying that you can't comply with what the...
We, we can if we have to. If we, if there was some that the committee says, okay, based on all the merits that is being submitted, needs to be revised or changed, yeah, we will be in compliance with that.
So what's the purpose of the, I'm sorry, what, what use is going to be made of this? Are there going to be six rental units?
No, 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 no. It's basically just the second floor as one unit. The first and the basement that we create is going to be another unit for the parents. That's basically what it is.
Which unit is considered the secondary suite? Is that the one on the second floor?
The second floor, yes, the second floor.
Thank you.
So that, and your client's parents are going to be up there?
No, the first floor.
Okay, then.
So do I understand you would, are, are you open to removing variance number two? Or you're, you still like us to rule on that?
Well, me and the client had actually spoken about that, and he would have loved to actually keep it. But if you guys rule over it and want to actually put it as a condition and needs to change it, no problem. We are, we in agreement to do so if we have to.
You have to tell us.
Thank you.
You have to tell us what you want.
We would love to keep it, but if it comes down to changing it, then yeah, definitely, we will do it.
Okay, so you want to leave it in? You want us to rule on this?
Yes.
With, as is?
As is, if, if, if it's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on this. I can understand the neighbor's apprehension whenever a multi-story building goes in that's brand-new, that, where someone's proposing another suite, and especially in an area like this where there is a demand for student housing. But that's not to say that that's what the case is here, that what's before the committee is the plans that have been filed with the committee. I don't see what the architect is, what the applicant is proposing is certainly consistent with what's the type of massing and design of buildings that are already on the streets. So from, from that perspective, I think what the applicant is asking for is suitable with respect to the official plan and the zoning bylaw. I think to provide some level of comfort to the neighbors, I think that the, Madam Secretary Treasurer, can we tie the approval to building in conformity with the plans submitted with the, with the committee, filed with the committee, so that, that makes sure that you're building in accordance with the approved plans and that you're not building an apartment house?
Thank you.
So with that in mind, I'm going to move that the application be approved, subject to urban forestry conditions and subject to the applicant building in accordance with the plans submitted and filed with the committee.
Sorry, we're in committee now. All right, a second there? All right, I, I will second that motion. All in favor? All right, so your application's approved, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the morning list.
You got me opposed to the last one?
Okay, I'll oppose.
I think that the position, the conditions dangerous, because it doesn't give enough flexibility to change it. I, I wouldn't have tied it to those plans at all. And I think removing variance number two made almost sense in the world.
He wanted to keep it. He may be back. He has to make some change, but I think the neighbor was spooked because he's got these student housing next door, so he figured everybody's putting in student housing except him. Okay.
Do you want us to sign him now?
Yeah.
Tying it to those plans means I can't negotiate at all.